Excellent. Good evening, everybody. It's January ninth, 2019, and we start every school committee meeting by reading our vision statement here in Ashland. The Ashland Public Schools will be a model district that embraces the academic and social emotional growth of all students through a supportive collaborative and challenging experience. Our students will develop into lifelong learners who will contribute positively to society. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV. So if you do want to make any comments tonight, we will ask that you come up to the podium so that we can hear you and that the folks at home who are watching can see you on cable TV. Our order of business this evening is our call to order, our opening procedures, our agenda review and adoption. First, we will have student presentations. We've got Team RoboWiz here tonight, welcome. We'll have some time for public comment, and I know there are some folks here that would like to make some comments this evening. We have on the agenda Piddaway School programmatic change recommendations for WeWatch and Pre-K for the 2019-2020 school year. We have a student travel request, AHS, JSA, Winter Congress, February 2019. We have an Ashland Cable Access Board vacancy appointment. We have foreign exchange students 2019-2020 discussion. The administrative items include the superintendent's report, the assistant superintendent's report, if any warrant approvals. Maybe not, do we have warrant approvals without Mrs. Bates here?
We can't, she, I believe she has to read the report, I believe.
Okay, no warrant approvals this evening. We do have two policy updates this evening. JLCEE, Management of Chronic Illness, JLCEE R, Guidelines for Managing Chronic Illness. Our consent actions include the approval of minutes from December 12th, 2018, and minutes of December 15th, 2018, the Budget Workshop, acceptance of gifts and donation, committed reports of activities with member updates, action items, and then we will adjourn. Everybody okay with the?
Yes ma'am.
Yes, so we have a couple members unable to make it this evening. We do have a quorum, so we'll be able to move forward with our business this evening. And we will start by welcoming our Team RoboWiz to come and show us this cool stuff that we have sitting here on our desk and tell us a little bit more about what you do. Come on up, kids, and then we can, then you can be on TV. Introduce yourselves, tell us, go to the microphone first and tell us who you are and what grade you're in.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Anaga and I'm in sixth grade.
Welcome.
My name is Anish Kulkarni and I'm in sixth grade.
Welcome.
My name is Trisha Amanda and I'm in sixth grade.
Welcome.
My name is Ragav Iyer and I'm in sixth grade. And the four of us together represent Team RoboWiz.
Excellent.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for giving Team RoboWiz the opportunity to present here today. My name is Ganesh Iyer and I'm the coach for Ashland Junior Robotics Club. And this is my wife Raji Iyer, she's also the assistant coach for the club. Over the past three years, Raji and I have been coaching a small group of kids. They were elementary school kids at that time, now they're in middle school. And we've been teaching them robotics and programming. Interest started as a personal interest and then kids talk at school and so they got to know about what they were doing at home and so a group formed very quickly. We started, two years ago, we started participating in an international STEM program called FIRST Lego League, also known as FLL. This program is run by an organization called FIRST or firstinspires.org with the main goal of promoting STEM education among elementary, middle and high school kids. They conduct tournaments worldwide to, they conduct tournaments worldwide to engage and encourage science, robotics, programming, and core values. Each year, FLL announces a particular theme. This year, the theme was Into Orbit. The tournament consists of three components. A robot game challenge for about two and a half minutes where the team must design a robot and attachments to solve missions prescribed by the tournament. And you can see some of the robots and the attachments that they have designed right there. The second component of it is a science challenge where the team has to do a research and develop a novel solution that solves specific issues within the context of the topic that they've announced for the year. In this year, it was Into Orbit. The third part of the challenge is to demonstrate core values that they have learned how to work as a team, respect each other, understand each other's views, and come up with a team solution. Our small team of kids Ragav, Anaga, Anish and Trisha, who called themselves Team RoboWiz, had a fantastic year. They were one of 720 teams that participated in the 2018 FIRST Lego League Tournament in Massachusetts. And they won the third place championship award in the eastern zone. They also won the second place Robot Design Award at the 2018 Massachusetts East Championship Tournament held in Newton. It was a good learning experience for them. They didn't get this last year, they worked hard on last year's challenge, but they, they barely made it. But there's a lot of learning experience from it, they were able to implement this year and actually go to the championship.
Amazing.
They're one of two teams from Massachusetts who have been invited to participate in the Legoland California International Open Tournament in Massa, in May of 2019. We have quickly learned that the kids will need to raise some funds to participate in the tournament. We're in the process of setting a GoFundMe page to help them raise some funds for that. I know you have a lot of experienced people here, if you have any guidance for us, we're happy to take that. And if you have any funds you want to give us, we're happy to take that as well. Team RoboWiz brings you a brief presentation for the science project that they presented at the tournament and that's what won them the third place. I present to you Team RoboWiz.
Excellent. Is it okay if we photograph you while you're?
Hi, we are Team RoboWiz, team number three for one to eight. Have you ever stargazed on a dark clear night? If so, you've likely seen it. An unblinking light slowly gliding across the sky. It could have been a satellite, but chances are it was a piece of space junk. With the launch of Sputnik One, humans entered the space age, but we also started creating space trash that poses severe threats to future manned and unmanned space missions.
NASA estimates over 170 million pieces of debris in low Earth orbit alone. With more frequent rocket launches and the lack of clear plan for disposing the bulk satellites, we are likely going to put more in orbit. This can increase the risk of a collision spiraling into the cosmic syndrome or runaway chain reaction of collisions that can exponentially increase the amount of space debris in low Earth orbit making a higher chance of collision and therefore increasing the risk that an astronaut will be injured. If we want to make manned space missions safer, we need to have a safe passage to outer space. That's why we chose to research on space debris. We have need to remove them.
As we researched on this topic, we learned that most space agencies have focused on the large space debris objects that are most obvious threats to existing functional satellites. These researchers commonly use two types of techniques, contact and on-contact. Some of the most notable research projects these agencies used were Medusa, Kite, Laser Cannon, Cube Cell, Space Nets and Hapless.
In our research, we chose to focus on the smaller debris in low Earth orbit. There are around 670,000 of them, ranging from one to 10 centimeters in size, traveling at speeds greater than 17,500 miles per hour. When such fast-moving debris collides with a rocket or satellite, the average speed of impact is 13 times faster than a speeding bullet. This would result in catastrophic damage. Our solution, the electromagnetic pod removing orbiting debris, AKA M-Pod, is a pseudo-contact concept design. It essentially uses electromagnetism to capture the space debris and change its trajectory such that it burns up in the Earth's atmosphere. Since electromagnets are temporary, we can activate them exactly when we need to, at a certain strength. This is the characteristic that our M-Pod will harness.
Our M-Pod is a chaser reusable pod satellite. We envision several of these pods being available on a mother satellite that, that can be deployed to deflect specific space debris before returning to receiving mother satellite for refueling, recharging and use. Our M-Pod consists of three main components. Number one, the Guidance Navigation and Control Center, also known as the GNC, located in the main body of the satellite. Number two, the Ferris net ejector unit, also known as the FNEU, located at the front of the pod satellite. And number three, the electromagnetic reflector plate, also known as EMDP.
We divide the process of the M-Pod into eight stages. Once the pod is deployed from the mother satellite at a predetermined angle, the GNC will use its sensors to accurately track and chase the debris to bring it within its mission activation ball, or MAB. Once the debris is within MAB space, the FNEU will cast a Ferris net on the debris. The net will comprise of interlocking blocks that will attach itself to the debris, making it magnetically attractable. Then, the EMDP will be activated to attract and deflect the debris. The GNC will control its thrusters simultaneously to alter the trajectory of the debris before the EMDP dispatches of it into the atmosphere. Thus, without having to physically contact the debris, we can alter its trajectory before accelerating its ballistic entry into Earth's atmosphere, thereby burning it up.
To demonstrate how we envision our project to work, we have a simple experimental setup. Here, the foam ball represents a space debris. We have cast a Ferris net on it to make it attractable. The suspended debris here simulates the moment when the M-Pod matches the velocity of the debris, making its relative velocity zero. We use commercially available electromagnets on both sides. When we energize them with nine volt batteries, we attract the debris to that side. If the debris is moving, this means a change in direction without having to physically contact the debris.
In the R&amp;D process, we spoke to many advisors such as Dr. Brandon Armstrong and electromagnetic researcher, Dr. Sudhir Sethler, an aeronautical engineer, and Dr. Matt Tesco, a theoretical physicist, who provides us inputs and constraints. Once the M-Pod was designed, we presented it to Professor Santosh Bhakthi of Regis College and our advisors to get feedback. We also shared it with the NASA Robotics Alliance team and they loved it. Finally, we shared it with the community, which is presenting at the Ashland Public Library and local newspaper, as well as the Ashland High School Robotics Team. We are happy to inform that we have a provisional patent on our solution. With their usable pod design, a simple electromagnetic-based concept M-Pod can become the Roomba of space, cleaning up space debris and using that as a prototype.
We also presented our project at the FIRST Lego League Championship Tournament and we achieved third place. We also achieved second place for our robot performance and design. We are happy to inform that we were invited to participate in the FIRST Lego League State International Tournament in Legoland, California, on May 2019. Thank you for listening to our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Wow.
Yeah, no kidding. In a million years, I never would have come up with that idea.
That is so impressive. Are you guys sure you're in sixth grade? Oh my goodness.
Impressive to remember all that without cue cards and everything else, that was pretty cool.
Yeah, just your presentation.
And there's a lot of technical content to it too, so that was amazing.
Congratulations.
So what's next besides the tournament out in California? You have another project next year that you already know ahead of time?
Yeah, so FLL announces their project in August of every year. So this year, although the Massachusetts level tournaments are completed, we are one of the very first ones to go. So it actually gives us less time to prepare. The worldwide tournaments go all the way through March, end of March, early April, and then all of them are invited to a couple of different locations where the international tournaments are held. So this year, two of the Massachusetts teams are, received nominations for going to the Legoland Tournament, International Open Tournament, and we are one of them. Next year's topic, we do not know yet, we will most likely know about it. They'll give us a hint, they have already given us a hint what it is, they haven't actually announced the topic yet. So we, once the tournament is over, we'll take down the robot, we'll take down the attachments that they've designed and we'll start building based upon what we've experienced this year, what worked in the robot, what did not work in the robot. They'll design a new robot for that. And then once the tournament board, which is the actual robot game, which is only two and a half minutes, all of the work is to do as many points, as many points you can score on the board in that two and a half minutes. And teams spend all sorts of engineering techniques to do that and that's where most of the learning comes from. And all of that has to be done autonomously, they cannot touch the robot. So once the robot leaves your base, you load it up with whatever you want and send it off. It has to go there, understand its surroundings, go interact with the mission model that they provide, twist it, turn it, pull it, grab something from it and come back to base and then you have an opportunity to send it out again. So there are as many times as you can go and get the tasks done remotely without coming back to gate, to base, you can score more points. And that's where more senior teams learn as the years go by. We can't just do one task and come back. You can barely finish two or three tasks and redo that. So their robot design can do five or six tasks at a time, just going at a one-shot, doing one after another. And then when they've collected all these maximums they can, they come back to base and collect those points.
Thank you.
Wow. And is there a limit to how many people you can have on a team?
They do have limits, the minimum is two for participating in the tournament. And they have as many as 10 kids in one team, but you can take as many teams as you want.
Okay.
There's no limit on the number of teams. So in Massachusetts, I, I thought it was 720, I think it's a little bit more than 720. So they, what they do is they have seven qualifier locations where, which holds a qualifying tournament, which is about 50 to 70 teams that participate in the qualifiers. They distill that down to the top 30% of the teams. And then the 30% of the teams participate in the championship levels in two locations. One in Worcester at WPI, another one is at the Newton Tournament, which is where we participated. And three teams from each of those get selected for the remaining international tournament.
And how often do you all meet to prepare?
And that depends, during the off-season time, like now, they're kind of off-season at the moment. We meet once a week on Sundays. And as we progress towards this tournament, it can get pretty crazy. Last year, not in 2018, but 17, it was our first year participating, we didn't know what to expect. We pretty much spent a month or so towards the, to the time between time, including all of Thanksgiving, pretty much doing it. This year, we knew what to expect, so we planned it a little bit better. So we met three times a week, usually Friday evening, almost all of Sunday, almost all of Sunday, for a good two, two and a half months as they're preparing the robot, as they're designing their programs and testing it out. You know, these are still toy-grade components, so they don't always work 100% of the time the way they're supposed to work. So you need to build programs that are robust enough that they can actually, you know, give a degree off here and there that it's not going to completely broken down.
Well, congratulations, it's very impressive. Thank you, Raji Ganesh, for your support. That's awesome.
Thank you.
And you don't have to stay.
Can we play with the Legos?
You're always welcome, yeah, just leave the toys.
Yeah, you gotta leave the Lego.
Just kidding.
So if you were third, I want, I want to know who got second.
Right, pretty amazing, huh? Nice job.
So the third place is not just based upon the robot design alone, it is actually based upon the project. And we believe that our impact was a little bit less than the other two projects. They actually got the second place in the robot design. One of the teams had worked on a project where they came up with some food-grade stuff that the astronauts could use and apparently that got a little bit more impact, so they got the better.
By the way, great job.
Very impressive, anyway.
Thank you for coming.
Congratulations, guys.
They chose food over safety, I guess.
I was thinking, look, because the food is going to get destroyed by meteor, space junk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
That's a good example of Ashland's best and brightest right there.
Absolutely.
Fantastic.
You know, it, it just gets better with these students. It's, it's always my favorite part of the meeting anyway, but they're just all so impressive. So, moving on in our agenda, this is the time for public comment and I know that some of you are probably here to share some comments publicly, which is fine. We have, we set aside time in every meeting for that. And so all that we ask, it's the same rules no matter what topic we're speaking on. As I introduce yourself, please, if you want to identify, you know, what your role is either in the school or if you're a parent, please try to limit your comments to three minutes. I don't know how many of you do want to speak, but even at three minutes, we could be here for a little while. If you have heard that the point that you wanted to make has already been made, unless you feel compelled to get up there and make it yourself, you're, you're welcome to do that. But if the, the point's been made, we will take all of the, the points that you share, regardless of who shared them. It's not an opportunity for us to have discussion with you, so unless there's a clarifying question, we will just listen. And then you're welcome to stay afterwards for that point in time when we're discussing the issues. Okay, so who wants to start? Come on up. Welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
Can I come right here?
Yes.
Eric, a little bit closer to the mic, please introduce.
Yeah, please speak into the mic, you will be recorded on WACA TV and there are folks watching.
Hi, my name is Erica Shoff. I'm the lead infant toddler teacher in the WeWatch room. I wanted to talk a little bit about our room because I know that's a main topic tonight in the vote. I know it's a room that loses money. We've lost money every year, but we've lost money in the same model every single year. Every year, we've lost money and yet the price hasn't increased. We've increased very little, if at any at all. I think that if we take the time, keep the year open one, keep the room open one more year, change the prices, you could see that it could be a room that is sustainable. Some of the costs in the figure are the nurse, the administration, but we're not incurring any additional costs. No special equipment is ordered for our room for the nurse to service our students. And in the handbook, it says that the nurse doesn't have to be there if WeWatch is there. It's only there when the public school is there. You could get rid of the nurse for our room and we could still be a room where we function and service our students. The students in our room contribute to the fundraisers, even though they're not always included in PTO events. And they still raise money for the school. I think it's a great program for your staff, the staff, some who've worked here 10 years. Having the security of a school nearby where they can afford to work and keep teaching is a great benefit. And the morale that comes with that, I think that just really needs to be considered when you make your vote. Again, I know it's a room that loses money, but we've only ever run it the same way. I think if you were to take one more year, up the prices, see who's interested, look at the figures in play, consider covering meetings, consider changing the structure maybe, maybe adjust the toddler room so you could change the staff. I just really urge you to consider keeping the room open one more year.
Oops, sorry. Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, and yeah, for any topic on the agenda, it doesn't just have to be on this issue. If you're here to speak about something else, now's the time.
Hello, good evening.
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Christine Graham, I'm a science teacher at the high school and a resident in town. My husband and I, my husband who both also teaches at the high school, have a two-year-old at the WeWatch program that Erica was just talking about. I thank you for taking the time to read my email that I sent prior so that I did not talk for hopefully three minutes. But I just wanted to say, and somewhat echo what Eric was saying, but knowing that she is a modest person, I just wanted to underscore how fabulous and, and really enriching and loving that the learning program is at the school. It is absolutely for younger students, but I think it is in the model that we want for the Ashland Public Schools in those ways. And then, as she said, to think about the restructuring and how that may or may not change the enrollment and giving it a chance to be filled before canceling the program. I think that a lot of people, my child goes five days a week, but I think a lot of people who have the option to go three days a week or two days a week, excuse me, we could choose that because it's an option and don't have to make the choice of five days or not. And I, I know for a fact that some people, if it is five days or no days, will choose five days because it is such a great program. So I know there's a limit in time for, you know, how quickly the decision needs to be made, but I would hope that we could see whether it gets filled and keep that option open before deciding to cancel it for next year. And thank you for your thoughts.
Thanks, Christine. Anybody else?
Hi, everyone, hello. My name is Ashwini Salvi and I am a resident of Ashland for almost 10 years. It's not a short time or a long time, that's irrelevant. The point is, my kids are growing in this school system and whatever you guys decide does matter to all of us. I have a general comment and a question regarding the school committee. Is how do we know what proposals are being taken, considered, and with whom were they discussed? What is coming as a change? Because all I got is an email that said, sorry, that said, "Details of the proposal will be offered verbally at the meeting." So we really don't have the time to process what you guys are going to suggest and is there even room for making any changes after that? Because we are not allowed to speak after we are done with this round. So I just wanted to know, as a person, as a citizen of the town, as a concerned parent or whatever, you know, I just need to know, how is it that we would be a little bit more engaged in this process? Thank you.
So, the agenda is posted and when we have documents available to support it, they would be posted along with the agenda. When that, it, that's the first way that you know that we're going to be talking about the meeting. The second way is to come to the meeting as you have and to listen to the discussion. And there will be minutes provided after the meeting for you to review and anything that is said here will be taken down for the minutes and any documents that have been shared during this meeting will be made public. It's up to the chair's discretion whether or not anybody can make a comment beyond this period of public comment. My hope is that you'll get, if you're at the meeting, you get all the information that you need when you hear the discussion that's about to ensue. If there's something that you feel that you would still like to say after the discussion, you can ask my permission and I'm inclined to grant it this evening given that some of the information you're going to be hearing for the first time. So that's the process. Okay? Anybody else during this period of public comment? Just so we have some, your, whoever.
And Laurie, one of the things that normally would happen, there's a time sensitivity with this, but for larger things, they're typically talked about at multiple meetings, so the data that we're talking about, you know, over those meetings is normally going to be available as well.
And to further answer your question too, before it comes to us, the administrators are the ones that they meet and it has nothing to do with us, they meet all year long constantly as a group figuring out, especially during budget season, what's working, what's not working, what the recommendations are. So, any, by the time anything comes to us, it's not like somebody just had the idea last week and thought that maybe we should just vote on something this evening. By the time anything gets to us, there's been a process, and that's their jobs. It's their, that's what we hire them to do, to talk about these things and to have meetings with the appropriate people. I, I know that Superintendent Adams has met with all the administrators from the buildings. He's met with Mrs. Durant, who's our Assistant Superintendent of Finance. So that's typically what would go on for a long period of time before we get a recommendation to vote on.
Right, but it impacts a lot of our kids too and our lives too. So do we even get to see the pros and the cons of whatever the proposals are? We don't get to see them, I mean, this is my second meeting with the school committee and the last meeting, the same thing happened. This is the same thing that's going to happen because the format doesn't change. So all I'm asking is, I need to know a little bit more, how can I do that?
Hopefully, your questions will be answered when you, we do have a couple of presentations this evening. And so if there's something that has not been answered, please let me know and I will give you an opportunity to ask that question.
Sure, thanks.
Okay. Yes.
I promise I'll be really quick.
It's okay, have you, have your three minutes, just like everybody else.
My name is Shannon McKay, I am a second grade teacher at the Warren School. This is my 10th year teaching in Ashland schools. In addition to being a second grade teacher, I'm a WeWatch and a preschool parent. Most of what I wanted to say has already been said. What I would mostly like to ask is that you give us a little time. I know one of the options being presented today is that we increase the rate and ask parents to commit to five days a week. Like Christine said, I think it would be awesome if we were given the chance to see if the room could be filled given those circumstances, because it is an amazing program. I know when we met with Jim last week, we talked about the fact that the price is super cheap. I think that we've been super lucky these past couple years, being able to pay that low of a rate, but I think a lot of people would be okay with the big increase that is being proposed. So I would ask that you, if we're voting to potentially keep it open, give us time to see if the room could fill before we just close it. Because I, I think you would be surprised, hopefully not.
Thanks, Jan.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so. Yeah.
You don't trust, uh, the boozma behind us?
Just waiting for it to come up. And my glasses.
Yeah.
No, it's not what I wanted. Thank you. There we go, good. So I'm, I'm going to give a brief overview of, of the process that we took, uh, in evaluating the WeWatch, uh, program. And Ms. Silva is the, the one I put in charge of doing that at the beginning of the year. So just for a frame of reference for those who are here, uh, over the years, we, we've had conversation uh, with regard to our programming at the preschool level, our requirements under state law, federal law. What are we supposed to be doing? Uh, are we meeting our, our obligations and our mandates? Uh, but what other, uh, benefits are we adding to, uh, the community, et cetera? So at Pittaway, as you know, we have two very distinct programs. We have the WeWatch program for the infant toddlers and then Sarah will talk a little bit about the preschool itself. So one of the things that we started having the conversation about, should be here, is doing a, an analysis of the program itself, of the WeWatch program. So to look at the financial impacts that the program has had, uh, on the district, uh, so sources that, that Ms. Silva looked at as well as I have, uh, looking at the posted tuition rates, comparison charts of tuition and, and preschool infant programs locally, tuition breakdown charts for the WeWatch and the preschool, as well as the Munis, uh, which is our, um, accounting software system that we use, uh, for salary costs. And what's important to do, understand is we've got to go back in time. We've got to go back to two thousand twelve, uh, May of two thousand and twelve, which is when the WeWatch program was established, uh, and approved by the, the school committee. And it was established, uh, with the understanding, uh, that the program was designed for Ashland Public School employees and their infants and toddlers. It was not a community-based program at that point in time. Uh, since then, we have actually had to supplement, uh, the community, uh, with the Ashland Public School employee, uh, children to, to work through some of the, the financial concerns that we have. But let me just go through some of the things that, that we found. Um, again, the WeWatch program was started in two thousand twelve and thirteen. Uh, it's clear to provide APS staff for the daycare option in district. And let, I want to be clear, WeWatch is, is the daycare portion of the school system. It's not mandated or required by law to have. The initial budget and projections from two thousand twelve to two thousand fifteen, when I went back and looked at the, the minutes of, of the meeting, uh, and the, and the presentation that was given to the school committee, I was not superintendent then, but I went back and looked, uh, at that information, was, the WeWatch program was, was supposed to be self-sustainable. Uh, and it was projected at that time to have income after the second year of about twenty-five thousand dollars a year. So it would have, uh, more revenue than expenses based on the information that was given to, uh, Principal White at that time. That information came from a survey. The number of seats that were available to Ashland Public School employees was determined actually to be sixteen seats at that time. There were two classrooms that were supposed, there were two teachers hired that first year, um, in that. It eventually changed, I think even within the first year, and Donna, you may have, sure, please, because you have some of the more historical.
The proposal that you sent over earlier was not correct. That was not brought to the school committee and approved.
The, the one I have was directly.
There were three.
Okay.
There was only, yeah, originally they were going to do an infant room and a toddler room.
Okay.
The, um, they decided they didn't have, they did, they needed a rollover room for when the kids turned eight, nine. They didn't have a three-year-old full day. So they rolled the, they needed another rollout room, so they made it one room.
Okay.
It was only one teacher.
So, okay, so I'm going to go back to the minutes that, that were approved
Okay.
that showed two teachers were hired.
Okay.
Um, and that that was the budget that was shown at the school committee meeting. So I'm just using the data that we had on record. So, uh, there, there were changes throughout, obviously, and it's been changing ever since as well. Um, but, but the whole point was, it was designed to be self-sustainable. It was not designed, it, it's private, it was not designed to have, uh, the Ashland Public Schools fund the WeWatch or the daycare program. That, that's really the main point of it. Um, in fact, we haven't had one year in the records that I've seen that have shown a profit in the programming. Uh, since two thousand thirteen, two thousand twelve, thirteen, the programs had to enroll in, in community students as well, community kids, uh, to try to offset some of the costs of the program. Uh, each year, staff sign their children up by and large for less than full-time. So if we have a five-day programming, so we currently can have three infants and six toddlers. We do not have nine children, if you will, that have five-day, full-day programming. We have, of just Ashland Public School employees, which is again what it was designed to, to be for. We actually have three employees who use the five-day model. The rest have two or three-day models. So that, I mean, that's, we haven't had that nine full-time, five-day-a-week, um, revenue coming in. So we have to, I don't say offset, we have to, we have to, you know, bring in students from the community in separate, um, increments, whether it's two days or three days to, uh, to narrow the gap of the revenue being lost. Um, the tuition rates we know are far less than alternative options. That's clear. Um, the rates have, I don't know, incrementally gone up. And incrementally, I mean by maybe a dollar or two over, over a period of seven years. Um, so it's made the program quite affordable as well for our public school employees. But yet still hasn't, even with the affordability, has not been, uh, subscribed to in full, uh, in terms of the, the number of spots open for the children. Um, as with any program, preschool is, is similar. There, when you're, you're tuition-based, there are offsets, there are charges that need to be associated with, uh, those programs. Whether it's administrative help, uh, whether it's the nurse, whether it's rental for the room, whether it's, um, the directors, part of their director salaries. If a portion of their time is used in that program, there should be an allocation of expense to that program. That hasn't been done in the past. And I, and I've reviewed the financial records of those and we still consistently had a loss in that program. It's unusual, I will say that, of having the public school district hold responsibility for a non-public school program. Um, and there are ramifications, um, such as different salary scales, hours worked, contractual, um, protections, lack of union protections, uh, et cetera. It's, it's, that's important to know, um, just because where, you know, where, for instance, is the director's responsibility in a private program? Is she in there so reviewing, evaluating, uh, the staff as well? Um, so tho- those are certainly things that I'm concerned about. Uh, I don't think the hours have worked, and I think staff would say that as well, with time changes. Um, the hours are seven-thirty to four PM, uh, which does not coincide currently with the APS school hours or APS employee needs. So APS employees have a seven-hour workday that's contractual, so they can drop off their children fifteen minutes before and pick up fifteen minutes after. Now, I'll tell you this, getting from one building, getting from, you know, Shannon could tell it better than anyone, right? Getting from Pittaway to Warren in that fifteen-minute time period with traffic in town, it's almost nearly impossible. Um, but tho- those are things that we found as we looked at the data, as Kathy looked at the data. Um, and I, and I certainly reviewed it. So there were two recommendations and, and to the point, we did have a budget workshop. This was already on an agenda. Um, December fifteenth, we had probably an hour-long discussion with this data, which is available, um, you know, that Kathy and Sarah presented to the school committee at that time. That being said, that recommendation that came from the initial conversation, which led to us having another conversation here, um, was the initial conversation was, it's in the best financial interest. And again, I, I want to be clear, we're not talking about, um, the value of the program for kids because we all can agree that, I mean, it's, Paul Viera and I go in there when we're down. That's where we go, uh, because it's one of the best, happiest places you can go to. I get that. Um, but I have a greater responsibility than to the district and to the community of Ashland as well to look at all, um, factors within any program that we have. So that recommendation that came from administration was to discontinue the program, starting two thousand eighteen, nineteen. This only program. We're not talking about the preschool, I want to be clear. We're just talking about the daycare, the WeWatch portion of, of the, the program. I then met with the, the staff who use WeWatch as well as teaching the program, um, a week ago and, or even before that. Was it a week ago, a little more? Uh, and I said, we need to have, we're having a conversation at the school committee. I, I invite you to come and have conversation, uh, and, and express your, um, your concerns. And what came out of that was another conversation was, is there another proposal, another recommendation that could be put forth? And I felt obligated, uh, I even said it on the December fifteenth, that I think you should have a couple of different proposals in front of you, not just one proposal. So I'm putting on another proposal, which you have before you, um, which is up here. So it's considering allowing the WeWatch program to continue under the following conditions, with annual review of the cost in the programming. One, each family must commit to be paying for five full days of WeWatch. We can't have two-day, three-day, five-day, there's got to be consistency. There's got to be a consistency of expectation of revenue to offset. The expenses are consistent, we know what that's going to be. It's the expectation of the revenue that's very challenging, uh, you know, to, to, to map out. Uh, two, uh, it's anticipated that each family would pay seventy-five dollars a day for a hundred and eighty-three days or thirteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars for the year per child. Toddler and infant rates right now are, are separate, uh, they're different and they're different, bless you. Uh, if you have a five-day, three-day, two-day, there, there, there's just, we, trying to be consistent with it, it's probably easier for Donna even with, with math, uh, so she doesn't have to do a dollar difference for some, some toddler versus an infant. Um, I understand the differences and why they exist, but, uh, the recommendation would be to keep it the same for consistency sakes. Um, this is assuming all spots are filled, uh, that would, that would get WeWatch to about a net zero cost. That means, you know, certainly looking at applying the things that should be applied. Some rent expense, uh, some salaries expense from the director as well as the administrative support, nurse support, et cetera. Each slot must be filled by APS employee children, so three infants and six toddlers, that's what we're allowed in the room. WeWatch and the hours, uh, will still be the same. Um, I looked at time sheets, I went back and looked at some time sheets of our employees and thinking, okay, currently even under the current model, they're getting their forty hours in, but then there's also overtime that's being, um, charged back to the, to the account, uh, throughout the year. So extending it is going to certainly have some additional cost to it. And, and you got to remember within this model that for every, that fourth child that comes in, you have to have a second person in the room. So you can have three, but then the fourth comes in, the second person has to come into the room. And then the same with the seventh child. Um, and the last point with this recommendation is, should employees decide not to honor their commitment? Which we've had, we've had, we've had people sign up for, for WeWatch and, and adjust their, uh, their ti-, things change within their own lives. Whether it's financial, whether it's someone's retiring and they can watch their child two or three days a week or whatever it might be, it happens. So the, the, to honor the commitment of a five-day week option, uh, there could, two, two options would remain. If something changed, we'd have to increase the rate for those who remained behind and/or discontinue the program. And those are really the, you know, you know, from a, from a, you know, logical standpoint financially, that's the only way it could work in, in reviewing the numbers the past, um, since two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. So Kathy, is there anything you want to add from, you did all, a lot of the, the legwork and the data dive and?
I guess I would.
Sorry Kathy.
Yeah, come up here, I'll go sit.
Can I ask you to please?
Yeah. I can speak down here.
Yeah.
I think I want to stress the fact that this was probably one of the hardest assignments that Jim gave me, uh, in my time here. Um, when I think about why I do the work that I do, it's because of kids. My whole career has been the dedication of empowering children, which starts at birth. Um, when I think about what touches our hearts, and I mean all of us here, it is children. And I found a wonderful quote that said something to the effect of, "The littlest feet make the biggest imprint on your heart." So to do a data dive and look at WeWatch and realize that fiscally it was not solvent and it hasn't been since inception was painful because I knew it limited me in terms of what I could come back to with regard to a recommendation. Um, and I, it, it pains me greatly. It doesn't take away however, what my level of responsibility is as I've been charged by both the superintendent but also by this district and by community members as well, which is to be honest and upfront about the ramifications of programming and options that we offer. And so my concern with regard to WeWatch is simply that it is a program that has not been able to figure out solvency in terms of coming to just a no cost and it, it funds itself. And furthermore, the second option, which I know is up for your consideration, has great concern because the work that I do is the constancy of knowing that a parent's job is to advocate for their children. And they will do whatever they need to do to make sure that their children get what they need. And so I have been across the table from people who very passionately promise one thing, but circumstances change and they have to change their direction because of such a thing. And my big concern with the option that is your second, you know, consideration is just really about, you put a collective group together who in good faith makes an agreement that this is what they can do. And then of those nine people, if there is a consideration that changes that for them, it impacts the others who remain. But it also impacts people like me who have to come to the table and say, okay, we have to return back to our earlier agreement. So my fear is that we just are postponing a problem that we will be facing again. Um, because even after one year, will we have another nine who can sign on for a program that has since its inception shown that it's had difficulty kind of, you know, kind of coming up in the black or coming up with a zero balance. Again, I want to stress, I think it is the most awesome program. Um, Jim and Paul, I have seen go in there to get their blood pressure reduced as well as to find sheer joy in just gazing at a child. Um, we have the most valued and qualified staff here in Ashland, which makes it a joy to work. Um, it also pains me to know that this benefit that we were hoping to be able to offer to our employees is not something that I feel is sustainable. So I guess I want to put the human side to it, um, that this is not easy for me and my heart breaks. It truly does. Um, it just, I can't change though that my recommendation remains.
Chair, I guess I have a question before you step away Kathy, and it may be for you or Jim, I'm not sure. But at least Jim, in your comments, you talked a bit about, um, sort of administrative charge and it's a financial thing. But I guess I want to ask a question about what responsibility other folks have for the administration? So Kathy, I don't know, are you involved in running this program? Sarah, are you involved in running this program? To the point where it's stretching your, your time and your resources, pulling. pulling you away or not from, you know, other things that are priorities within the district as well?
Absolutely. I mean, I know Sarah can certainly speak to it and I wouldn't want to take from your ability too, but that's absolutely a valid point. It goes across in many directions in terms of, when you do have a program and you try to start a program, you do try to steal your resources from what's already in existence. Certainly, again, in my life for student services, that's what I do to build programs. I put in kind of the skeleton, but I know in terms of kind of the quality you do have to borrow from what is in existence. That includes things like obviously what you mentioned, Sarah's time in administrating, Donna Lowell's time in terms of, you know, the administrative, getting tuition and reimbursements and documenting those pieces of it. But it also includes coverage issues when you can't get, you know, someone's out sick and you can't get a sub, but you don't want to leave a shortage, you know, pulling somebody from another location. So there are all sorts of ways in which we pull our resources to make sure that we're doing the best we can by what we've accepted as our responsibilities.
Thank you. Sarah, did you want to add something?
You pretty much summed everything up with that. But I think my daily responsibilities fall under it being housed in our facility at the Pittaway School. So those coverage issues, helping support that, the daily supervision of staff and parents coming and going and dropping off. I also evaluate the lead teacher in that room and also support those ESPs in the classroom with a yearly evaluation. And then the biggest amount of administrative support I would say is through the billing, the daily communication that comes out of the office that's run by Mrs. Lowell in making sure that we're making our tuition payments and our deposits and getting that all over to central office to make sure that we are meeting our numbers as best we can from a financial standpoint. And that's pretty consistently on a monthly basis if not, you know, with fees and money coming and going and that comes directly to the Pittaway School. So there's a lot of money transferred there as well.
And I guess, so that's sort of half my question, the other half is, what are the things you'd be doing if you didn't have those responsibilities? Whether it's for Pittaway, whether it's for the district, because Kathy, your position's district-wide. Because I'm trying to balance in my mind sort of the amount of time you spend working with this program, which is, you know, a very nice benefit and I'll save some broader comments after we're done with questions. But as to, you know, what are the priorities for kids and our educational responsibilities and what we have to do?
So, my obligation as the preschool director is obviously to facilitate and manage and run a program for early childhood children which is ages three to five. I'm also the special education coordinator. So I'm assisting with a transition from early intervention and child find to evaluate any student that may have a suspected disability and then make sure that we're implementing those mandated services that are both federal and state regulated to make sure that we're providing appropriate access to the curriculum for those students ages three to five.
I don't know if you want to add anything Kathy or not?
One of the things that does happen is, and it becomes unique to student enrollment, but sometimes, you know, unique situations present themselves and many times what I end up with is a phone call saying, can you investigate and look at, what is the regulation, what are the dynamics especially with regard to more often IDEA? When we get a student who's identified or preschooler or toddler who's identified with need, what are the obligations of a preschool setting? Or actually an infant toddler setting as compared to a preschool setting? Which is a different regulatory directive. And so, you know, investigating those because in the end, we want to do right by all students and we want to be appropriate with the considerations that we make. And every kid presents a unique story and a unique set of circumstances that we have to be very careful and honorable about. If we're going to be charged with doing something, we want to do it well. You know, plain and simple. So, a lot of times what my work is, is getting presented a problem and trying to do the investigation to figure out what is the right solution to do that honorable work.
Thank you. Thank you both. Laurie, I don't know if you're ready to get into deliberation on this or?
Yeah, unless, was there anybody else Jim you were going to have speak on this?
No, I mean, like I said, Kathy did the majority of the work and thank you for Donna supporting her finding the information, so.
Okay, so I will open up.
She's got the historical knowledge.
To the board for discussion unless everybody's heard the presentation. Is there anybody who wants to add something now before we start our discussion? Because I won't interrupt this discussion, but if you have something that you want to say after hearing what you just heard, please, I think now's the time for that. Anybody? No?
So, I'll start. I mean, I share Kathy's sentiments completely when it comes to the idea of potentially closing a program. It's not what you want to do. It's harder looking at people who've taught my kids, they're sitting out there Ms. McKay. And I know another teacher who wrote us a letter and we did receive a number of letters, had one of my children for three years in the neighborhood program. So, it is not something that doesn't connect for, at least for me personally, but I suspect for my colleagues here. I also am not so far removed from the stresses as a parent of trying to figure out daycare with two working parents and doing all the juggling and on the uncertainty. And I'm thinking, I was sitting here thinking while some of you were speaking about, yeah, it was probably about, you know, thirteen years ago now that I worried about finding a spot for our first son, which was six months before he was born, you know, and you worry about that and transitions and changes and all that. And it's, I can't imagine what all of you are thinking about is potentially having to to find another daycare solution for your children. So, I certainly want to acknowledge that and tell you I truly empathize with it. It's not, it was twelve years ago or thirteen years ago, but it seemed like just yesterday. But, you know, that said, I guess my thoughts to my fellow committee members are, as a district, we're charged with upholding the mission. The one that you started this dialogue with and in our meeting with. And that mission is really focused around educating children. That's our primary mission. And I certainly would never say that WeWatch doesn't also educate children, for sure it does. But our mission really is to focus on those kids from age three to twenty-two. And this is really outside that mission. From my perspective, I think we need to be focused really on our mission. The reason I asked the questions that I did of the three of you, Jim, Sarah and Kathy is because what probably concerns me more than anything else than whether we can find a financial solution to this is that I think your time, and I'm looking at Kathy and Sarah and saying this, that you're spending with this program is in my estimation pulling you away from other priorities within the district. Which means that we're not necessarily fulfilling our responsibilities and we're not putting our priorities in line with our mission. And so, that's really the lens I'm looking at this through. You know, as to the thought about extending for another year, you know, I appreciate where that comes from and I think it's a sort of one of those, well, let's see if we can make it work financially aspects to it. But I still think that's at odds with the reason we're here. I also think pragmatically that if we, as long as this is a live issue, if we were to effectively kick the can down the road a year, that's going to impact, you know, whether people are willing to get into the program and start taking advantage of the benefit. Because as I said a minute ago, last thing I would have wanted to do was put my kid in one daycare spot and then be moving them a year later and a year later. So I would think that if I were a person who was contemplating options now for the first time, hadn't been in WeWatch, I'd be really concerned about moving them there and thinking I might have to move them a year to something different. And of course, then there's the challenge of finding the spaces in other facilities. So, I would say with much regret and consternation, I feel like moving forward with the closure of the program effective the end of the school year, which I think is the proposal Jim, the end of the school year, is sort of where I'm at at this point.
Well?
Yeah, so, I land in a similar spot. But first, I do want to thank everyone who sent letters and your input. We, I read all of them, I value your input greatly. And I don't think I'm out of line if I say that no one at this table and probably in the district questions the value of the program. It's, you know, there's probably no better program that's going to equip them to be successful in the next step, wherever that is, whether it's in our district or another district. But it goes down to, I land slightly differently than you on, hey, this is a great, this would be a great benefit for our staff and if, you know, there were different circumstances, it might be different, right? A lot of other districts, if they do have a program like this, it's run by an external organization, something like EDP or something like that. And if we had space and some other external organization wanted to take it on, have to deal with all those staffing concerns that were outlined, that would be, it would be probably different. But, you know, I want to make sure that you know that I think all of us value the program as far as what it does for those kids. It's certainly a value. But for me, it comes down to the sustainability. And I fail to see how if we're going to, if we take something that is at a low cost with lots of options now that is not full, how would we, how could we justify thinking that it's going to be full if we remove the options, require max commitment and make a substantial rate increase? I don't see how that works, even with the numbers that they have. Right now, there are five infants enrolled, five staff infants. So even if we did the second, the other option, that leaves two of them out. Even if all five of them wanted to go and go from, you know, the two-day, two-day infants are paying about thirty-five hundred dollars a year, that's a ten thousand dollar a year increase. Okay, so, I don't think it changed my point, but please, please don't interrupt. So, again, that's a substantial increase. I fail to see how, if we're having trouble filling it, that a substantial increase in the rate is going to lure people in. And it's not even about getting nine in this year. It's, if we got nine in this year, what if we're at seven next year? If we don't have ten to fifteen families wanting the slots, it's not sustainable. Sustainable isn't about filling them this year. It's about knowing that they can be filled in all those other years. And so, I don't see how that works. And, you know, I think it's a struggle, part of the problem is probably how practical the hours are. And especially as you start to move towards a comparable cost with the daycare situations that, services that provide the hours that you can drop off much earlier and pick up at six o'clock in the evening, right? So, I think it's a stretch to, our school days start at seven fifty-five and end at three fifteen from a district perspective. And that doesn't include the potential staff meetings that they have to attend before or after or the arrival and dismissal responsibilities they may have. So, you know, a seven-thirty drop-off for a seven-fifty-five start pretty much precludes any MINDAS staff from taking advantage of it if they have arrival of responsibilities. They wouldn't be able to do it. So, I don't see it's practical and I just go down to the sustainability of it. If it was sustainable and it was something we could offer the staff and not, you know, take away from the other things we're doing, then I think I would feel differently because it is a value to the, to these kids and to the staff. But, I, yeah, I'm in the same boat as Mark. If there was another option that would, that could make it sustainable, then I think we could, we could consider it, but right now, I don't see that.
Well, I don't want to repeat anything that's already been said other than, gives me a pit in my stomach to even talk about this, really. I'm that much further away from having to deal with this issue than my colleagues here. I think, I have four, I was going to say kids, they're adults now. And it's probably been about twenty-five years since I had to, you know, make some really difficult daycare decisions. And this still gives me the same exact pit in my stomach that I'm sure that I had back then. It's just, it's a challenge and it's hard to find the right program. And then when you do, if there are issues on the other end that are out of our control, I really have, I really feel you, I do, I do. And again, though, I was probably, I was the only person, probably even at this whole table, I was going to say just my colleagues, but even on the right here, that was on the school committee that voted the program in. And it isn't, what the financials look like now isn't what it was projected to be and it never was. So, at some point, I think it's not what we expected and whether or not it can be turned around, I'm not sure. But I also really feel, and I'm being honest here, that I really need to rely on the administrators. You all just heard the same thing I heard. That it's not something that anybody feels is sustainable. So, I think I would have to agree that if that's the recommendation, then I would be inclined to go along with it. So.
Ready for a motion at this point? Yeah, I guess the one thing I would say, just sort of, so it's in the record if nothing else, is that we're making a decision tonight with three people here. And Kathy and Erin are not able to be with us. I had, generally, you know, we make bigger decisions like this. I think we try to have everybody here present, but I think the sense of timing, and I think Paul, you alluded to it earlier, that there's some time sensitivity about making this decision is really putting me at the point where I'm ready to make the motion tonight if you're prepared to take one. Rather than sort of saying, you know, I'd really like to hear from Erin and Kathy and have everybody kind of chime in on this.
Well, I mean, I think even if they were here, the three of us seem to, we have a quorum and I think we're headed in a direction. And I think that in fairness to everybody, even for those folks that need to start thinking about what the next step is that we should resolve it.
Then I will make a motion, sorry, draft motion, talks about programmatic changes. It seems like we're making a motion to discontinue the WeWatch program effective at the end of this school year.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Sorry folks.
Sarah, have you come up please to discuss the preschool program, please?
Yeah. You guys know you're welcome to stay, but you don't have to.
Okay, so, shifting gears a little bit, which is without being said, difficult to do. We were tasked at the start of this year, I was, joining the position as the director of the preschool, to really look at our preschool model and to do a little bit of a self-reflection on our current model at state and then make sure we're meeting the needs and the mandates of our early childhood programming for kids ages three to five. So, I would like to say upfront, the school committee's been very involved as well as Mr. Adams and Mrs. Durand and Ms. Silva in already making some of those needed steps to include us as the fifth part of the Ashland Public School system. I think it both began three to five years ago when Mr. Adams became superintendent to really start to consider us as a pre-K through twelve district. And that was a really nice kind of endorsement that we are being embraced as part of that extension to our school system. And the Ashland Public Schools, it provides services for kids ages three to twenty-one and as they turn twenty-two if needed. And we really appreciate that and being considered Ashland Public Schools as pre-K to grade twelve. We also worked very hard to realign the hours of our school day to be reflective of an academic program for children that's comparable to time on learning in any other age group throughout the district. That was another big change, I believe that was three or four years ago. And then most recently, two years ago, as we entered a new collective bargaining unit, you all were in favor in pulling our staff under that collective unit to make them part of the union. Because in previous years, our special education team, as they were hired to provide those services with children identified with disabilities, they were included in the collective unit, but the remainder of the preschool staff were not. They were working under a town employee of a private preschool. So that was a great improvement that we had over the last few years. So, we were charged to just make some more steps. So we're charged to just make some more steps to making that, that fully integrated preschool model. This fall, I charged our preschool staff to really see if anyone would join a working group that would meet outside of school hours to really be reflective on our current model, our practice, the changing demographics here in Ashland, and how we can make those steps to continue to provide quality programming for students with and without disabilities ages three to five. And they have worked extremely hard. Many of them are here today. So this is kind of a collaboration of all of their efforts. Most people, if you're working in the field of education, you know that a lot of our work is through mandated federal and state regulations. So I'll just focus on some of the main highlights for us and how that pertains to children ages three to five, which is our world in preschool. IDEA, the most recent reauthorization of that federal regulation happened in two thousand and four. It is up for reauthorization and that should be coming in the next three to five years, hopefully. But the key points in there is to focus on, we're providing any eligible child ages three to twenty-one years of age, any services determined by a team, if there is evidence of a disability, so that they can access the general curriculum and be active participants within that school experience. We also are charged with FAP, which is Free and Appropriate Public Education, to make sure that that is available to students. And as we think about traditional school services, that's kindergarten through grade twelve. And we know we need to bring that back to age three to really make sure that we're supporting them through those preschool experiences. And then as educators, we're always charged to be looking at the least restrictive environment. We want children living and learning through a naturally occurring environment that is meaningful and reflects their community that they live in and their life experiences. So we want to make sure that if a child with a, a identified disability requires services, we want to make sure that we can support them in that least restrictive setting. So if it is in the classroom, we want to make sure that those supports are embedded within our preschool programming. The big focus in IDEA is Part C, and that is specific to children birth to three that may be identified through early intervention and then the transition to school-based services. And that actually starts when a child turns two and a half. And then we begin the evaluation process when the child is two point nine. It's a big part of what impacts our enrollment and it happens whenever the child turns three. So we don't have a cutoff of August thirty-first, they turn three. We need to make sure that we can support them as we get notification or a parent or a doctor's office can call us with a suspected disability that we might want to look at. As we look at our early intervention referrals, I know this committee has talked about the changing demographics in Ashland and our needs to continue to improve school programming. The trend is high, as you can see, from December fifteenth of this year, we had already received twenty-three early intervention referrals for children that may need an additional level of support than that general education setting. So that is a variable that is a challenge unique to many preschools in the area because we can't predict that on a census or in a registration. Those are often just coming in a few months before they turn. So we need to make sure that we have programming space available in our preschool and that if a child is deemed eligible, their services start the day they turn three. The U.S. Department of Health and the Health and Human Services have also put forth an inclusion statement during September two thousand and fifteen. And that was really being reflective of, we are doing a nice job providing special education services, you know, over the last ten or fifteen years for kids that are three to five, but they're not always an inclusive setting. So there's been a real push, especially in the state of Massachusetts, to make sure that we're providing quality programming within their community and their neighborhood schools and that we can service all those students in there so that they can learn alongside their peers. Research shows there's a ton of benefit to that. I can go into that for hours, but I will spare you that and definitely be available if people have more specific questions. But our goals of this self-reflective program evaluation were to really shift our program approach from the private preschool to an integrated model focusing on our obligation for mandated services and meeting the needs of partner peers within the public school system and that kind of framework and structure. We were asked to evaluate our current programming, the size of the preschool program, our models and session options, as well as the various student supports that we have and of course, our finances. We were also asked to provide recommendations that make a smoother transition into a fully integrated preschool model. There's been a lot of work to have some integrated and inclusive learning opportunities and we would like to continue that and to build to the entire program, being able to support a student in any classroom. And to collaborate with APS, they have been tremendously helpful to have the conversations about how we can support our early learners with unique profiles, as well as the peer partners in the community, all while trying to be fiscally responsible. And then, of course, to be respectful of the current staff and community that this is affecting and the valued work and needs that the, and opportunities that they've been given to us from the Ashland preschool. I will apologize, these visuals are a little bit hard to describe our current model because we have a lot of different blends. We currently have AM sessions for three-year-olds and PM sessions for four-year-olds. That's reflected in the yellow and green respectively of the first two rooms. Those rooms are currently duly certified, so it's an early childhood teacher who's duly certified in special education. So they're providing those services for kids with or without disabilities. We have added this year a fully cert, a duly certified full-day option for four-year-olds. And then we continue to have three rooms that are non-integrated at this point. We have a three-year-old full-day room and a four-year-old, two four-year-old full-day rooms. We provide inclusive opportunities, but they're not duly certified where the teacher is providing both of those services at that time. So we're providing special education staff to push in at that time. The district has also been very supportive to increase our specialized programming for students that have a higher level of need. Many fit the profile of being on the autism spectrum and needing a high level of specialized instruction, as well as related services. We grew that program three years ago to now include two classrooms based on the changing demographics and needs in town. And we will, again, thank you for that because we have been able to keep a lot of students learning alongside their peers and remaining in their neighborhood schools, which is very important to us.
Sarah, sorry to interrupt.
Yep.
Can you hit Control L on that? It'll make it fullscreen and probably make it easier for people to read.
Oh, it didn't work.
Or you can go to View and just go to fullscreen.
Yep.
Should have a fullscreen.
I have actual size, fit page and fit width on the PDF.
That's fine then.
Where am I going, right here? That's all it did. Sorry.
Too big.
And, oh, sorry, going back. There we go. And then the other big option with the current model is we provide families full-day options, five days a week, and then the three-day and the two-day option in both the half-day and full-day. So similar to WeWatch, we've taken the needs of the community and how they choose to enroll the kids and then try to piece together, if one family wants a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and someone else wants a Tuesday, Thursday, we offset that in our enrollment to try to present a balanced budget and to fulfill our tuition obligation. Any questions on the current model? Do you want me to keep going and save? Good to keep going?
Yep.
So the major factors influencing our full enrollment are our peer partners, looking at families from the community that would choose to enroll their child in our preschool, is the length of the school day. You know, being part of the Ashland Public School Systems, we're looking at academic time on learning and we have built our schedule around what an academic day is. And many working families still need that before school and after school and extended daycare. We do run a small program that can offset for some of those family needs, but it's nowhere near some of the private daycares or preschools that may do seven AM to six PM. Because we're looking at it through the public school lens and what that school day is. The multitude of choices, as I mentioned, the two, three and five-day options can definitely work for some families and can also make it challenging based on what we have available for enrollment. We tend to get calls in, do you have a five-day or do you have a three-day or a two-day, even throughout the year. And we really kind of have to piece that puzzle together based on how the enrollment kind of flushes out. And then we always have a, a number of students that will be identified. They started as peer partners, but they may be identified as having a disability or going through the evaluation process and that happens after enrollment. And once they're identified as having that need, we no longer charge that tuition. So that becomes part of the special education budget. And that will affect our tuition income and revenue. So our proposed model, we've been working very hard with school committee during the budget workshop, as well as the entire admin team, to really look at what steps are needed. The working committee identified up to five possible model options that we will not go through. We've kind of narrowed it down and we looked at other area programs with school districts comparable to us, then some bigger and smaller than us, to really look at what is best practice in early childhood education for students with and without disabilities. And then how does it fit into our current model? We don't want to make drastic changes that could have a significant financial impact or community impact for our families that want to be able to access that. So while taking in the current model, what we feel is best practice for an early childhood integrated setting and then all the various stakeholders, we've kind of come up with this most recent model and definitely thanking Mrs. Durand, Mr. Adams and Ms. Silva about going over all the finances and the variables. We've come through hopefully a model, programmatic changes that we could present to you today. This is the visual with the current model, how it flushes in, but I will focus on the big changes on the following slides and we can go back to the visual if anyone needs it. The proposed model really focuses on promoting the culture and environment of inclusivity. We really want to make those steps to a fully integrated preschool. Jim would have said on September first, I would have said I want it all integrated, you know, by now or next September. And we realize that we probably need to work in stages to be respectful of all of those variables that I mentioned earlier. Our goal is to really support all students and staff in any classroom. We want to be able to support the communities and the families and how they choose to enroll their students and make sure that they can be supported regardless of what their need or their services might be. And then, of course, I am charged to make sure that we're mandating, we're providing the mandated services for early childhood children with unique needs and that we're being fiscally responsible reflecting the program costs and the number of students enrolled. The proposed model also creates more consistency with the ability for us to provide consistent instruction and skill attainment for students and looking at seeing students more often and changing the options, as well as stronger programming and curriculum and more consistent tuition coming in. So the big option here would be to change from the two, three and five-day options to presenting a four-day option, Monday through Thursday, only for three-year-olds in the morning. And then four-year-olds would be offered five-day programming, either in the A, in the PM session or full day. And this is a bigger visual breaking out. And I think it's important to note why the team is recommending only a four-day session for three-year-olds. As we looked at area preschools, most are seeing that that's the first transition to any kind of school environment. And four-day a week provides consistent opportunity for them to learn their routines, to gain access, to be separated from home, to begin to learn amongst their peers in both the social and academic learning environment. And it allows our preschool staff to use our Fridays for team evaluations, transitions and observations from early intervention to promote that consistency and parent education. Last year alone, we called seventy-seven substitutes just to cover our meetings, which provided support in the classroom, but it wasn't familiar support that could provide children with consistent learning opportunities in a predictable manner where they could anticipate what that support would look like. And then for four-year-olds, we know that we're increasing that consistency and readiness for both school, social and emotional learning across the board. So we'd like to continue with a half-day session in the afternoon, Monday through Friday, five days only, and then full day, Monday through Friday, full days only. The other recommendations would be to try and pilot a multi-age room, which is general education-supported for this next year of two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. There's many area schools that are providing multi-age developmentally appropriate curriculum versus the straight grade of three-year-olds and four-year-olds. So this would be a great opportunity for us to flush that out and see what we do well or what we may need for more professional development and see if that meets the needs of our Ashland residents and what the needs of our preschoolers are. It would also provide opportunities for inclusion. We could still push in support through our special education staff for some students that may have specialized programming, but still have limited inclusion opportunities. And then we can really evaluate how effective it is. Can we differentiate the learning? Can we meet the needs? And can we be, you know, ensuring that success for that range of students, potentially ages two point nine to five years old?
Can I add one other point to that? The one other point I wanted to make with regard to the piloting of a multi-age classroom is that the common development of a three and a four-year-old is actually scattered development. And so you will have students who are three years old having skills that are very comparable to a four-year-old peer group, but also having gaps in their skills, which we need to build. And the same holds true for four-year-olds. That is the norm for a three and a four-year-old, to have that scatter of skills. A multi-age classroom actually offers that ability to be flexible with meeting the needs with a student in terms of where their strengths are and promoting that, but also building the areas where they need to have that skill being built up.
The other recommendation out of the proposed model would be reducing one of the general education classrooms right now. Based on our current enrollment and past historical enrollment, we're not at capacity right now. So trying to wear our fiscally responsible hat, potentially reducing a room would allow us to be more sustainable and be able to evaluate the current programming. I think this is also where we would want to take some feedback from the stakeholders, that if there are community members that are ready and want to look at our Ashland program, that's something that we could revisit once we go through the registration process. If, you know, school committee was in agreement to kind of keep that on the table to look at based on the community needs, I think that's an important variable. But it's hard to predict or make that assumption that we could fill it when we haven't polled the community yet.
Sarah, can I just interrupt you for one second on that? If we are reducing a general education classroom, is there going to be an impact on staff?
So there would be, obviously, of one teacher and one assistant. But there also is the benefit now that we've brought that building under the collective unit, that we could look at where those individuals are certified or where there's openings throughout the district and other buildings to see if they would like to stay within the district and, and find a home there.
Yeah, to that point too, we know for a fact that we have some retirements that are coming up. So there, there's no anticipation of job loss. It just happens to be, I sort of equated it when we were having this conversation earlier with Sarah and Kathy was, I'm thinking of my high school principal hat. If, if I had zero students sign up for German class, I, I couldn't continue to have that German teacher. In this case, it's, it's similar. We have a classroom where those students could be dispersed amongst the other general ed classrooms that currently exist and therefore, we, we don't need that room. But I, I think Sarah's point was, i-if through the registration process, that we find that there's a need, that there's a demand, we would come back and ask for that position to be reinstated. I think that's important to know for the community. It's not, you know, we're looking at it currently, but then it could change with registration. And we may need another class. We've done that in years past with kindergarten and we've done that with grade three, where we've got the registrations in and, and the numbers over the summer have dictated the fact that we need to have another teacher in there. But remember, the general ed are the paying classrooms. So we've got to be able to cover the cost of, of the teacher in that classroom. They're not part of the Ashland Public Schools budget, if you will, in terms of, they're not required a special education.
Right, but with the number of students we currently have, we would still be able to service them under this new model. So you're not, the way that we've been going along consistently and the predictions that we've made about enrollment would still be, we'd still accommodate that under this new model.
Yes, yeah, we could.
With some flexibility to open something up if more folks came forward wanting.
And I think that also speaks to kind of the time-sensitive nature of this too, is that registration and enrollment for area preschools, as well as ours, is already a little bit delayed. So we really want to get that input from the community about, you know, these smaller changes. Definitely have an impact and we're not discounting that. But to see what the community needs might be so that we can then revisit that down the road versus stalling it till March and then having lost those potential peer partners interested because they've had to make other arrangements. And then the last point is, we would really like to continue our work with aligning with the K through five buildings. We have the same early release schedule right now so that we can participate in professional We have the same early release schedule right now so that we can participate in professional development opportunities, which is fabulous. But we would like to continue that trajectory with a similar calendar where we would have conferences at the same time and a report card kind of marking period time. Currently Pittaway does a January and June and they do not have the October or November and March conferences. They do two days where they stop programming and do conferences one day at the end of January and one the first week in February. So we would like to propose that we do a fall conference and a spring conference with our families as we talk about kids transitioning to school and specifics about their learning and what their needs might be moving forward. We are also potentially proposing a two percent tuition rate increase. We've done the proposed models if we went straight to the four year olds or four days for three year olds and then five day programming for four year olds, either half or full, with the current rate is and then with the proposed two percent increase is. It's not a significant jump, but I think it would help us financially with some of our numbers just to help keep that fiscal hat on and make sure that we're being responsible with the tuition revenue coming in.
Let's just let her finish and then I will let you make a comment.
I think there's a mistake on that slide.
Oh, okay. And then we've worked hard just to kind of restate what our vision is for the Ashland Integrated Preschool. So I'll just read it quickly. The Ashland Integrated Preschool provides developmentally appropriate curriculum through a positive, respectful, and inclusive learning environment to children ages three to five within the Ashland community. Our highly qualified professional staff are committed to teaching the whole child by fostering all aspects of learning. And we believe all children have the ability to grow and learn. We are dedicated to providing equal opportunities in an integrated setting to students with disabilities alongside peer partners from the community.
And cute pictures.
Some cute pictures just to leave up.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, so you're thinking there's a, an issue with the numbers?
Yeah.
Is there? I'm sorry.
The numbers, I think what Sarah said was we have for four year olds, four day, full day options, not a five, half day option.
We have a half day session.
Right.
That can be for five days, Monday through Friday, from twelve ten to two fifty-five.
Go back to the model.
That's the current one.
No, no. Go back to the visual.
So the four year olds had a full day option or a PM option?
Yeah, the visual was the strike, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, so we would still have half day sessions for four year olds in two classrooms, Monday through Friday. And then we would also have full day options.
Can you go to the next slide?
The first one.
Yep.
No, the next one, the next one. One more. Yeah, here, so we're getting the four year olds.
Half day sessions and full day sessions.
For five year olds. Okay.
Monday through Friday.
Sorry, Monday through Friday.
Yep, no, that's okay. No, I'm glad you said it.
You don't know how many times we've looked at this.
There's a lot of four day, four year old, three year.
The three year olds have a PM session and there's a four year old PM session that correlates with it.
That's what I've been reading, like full day for four year olds.
No one has, no one has made that statement, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, I think I have a comment. We're not full because we opened up a four year, an additional four year old full day class to accommodate replacements. And it wasn't opened until March or April or at a later date. So when I went back to the waitlist, everybody had already found preschools. So that's why we're not full. I think that Ms. Lowell's comment actually speaks to the puzzle that we are faced with on a yearly basis with regard to the considerations of how to be both fiscally responsible as well as setting up programming for our community peers and our special education students. And each year this is a constant struggle to kind of piece together all the variables that come into play, which is part of the reason why our proposal in terms of moving us forward in that integrated preschool, you know, fully integrated preschool model is to reduce those options in part to take away some of the puzzle pieces so that we can more fully align with the stability and consistency of projection and anticipation in addition to knowing we will always have the uncertainty of who are those turning three year olds that are going to be identified as having need that we'll need to program for. It's a great point about some of the struggles we had on a yearly basis.
Understood. And you guys, are you done? You're finished with the presentation? So I do want to give everybody the same opportunity that I gave with the WeWatch. If there's, if there are any clarifying questions, now's a good time to ask them and.
You didn't show all your good pictures at the end though.
I saw them. You want me to keep those up? I saw the pictures.
Yeah, she put it up there.
Yes, if you do, I do have to ask you to please come up so we can all hear the question. And it's kind of the nature of public meetings, sometimes, you know, we're, this is where we're getting our information as well, so.
Hi, Margie Gassell. I'm a little confused about dropping one of the, I guess the general ed refers to students that don't have special needs. And it sounded to me, maybe I misunderstood, but it sounded like you aren't doing the greatest job of integration according to what you're supposed to be doing. So I'm not understanding if you drop one of the classrooms, how you're going to achieve better integration.
Sure, yeah.
That's you, Sarah.
So I can definitely clarify that for you. We are currently integrating three of our classrooms with duly certified teachers. So those teachers are providing both the general curriculum to all the students in the room as well as the specialized instruction embedded throughout their day. And that's when we know, research shows, a lot of kids learn best with that additional level of support embedded and it's seamless, it's happening rather than a pullout or more restrictive setting. While some children learn best that way, if a child can be successful in the classroom, we want to be able to do that. And we currently have three rooms that are not working under that model. So when we look at the overall tuition enrollment from the peer partners in the community, we don't need that many numbers at this point. So we would want to continue to kind of focus on what those rooms are with the current capacity, meet the needs of both the learners with disabilities as well as the peer partners, and then see what the community needs are. And as we do that and as we potentially open another room, we would be asking to hire someone that is duly certified so that we can continue to grow the program in that model of a fully integrated setting.
Do I have another question?
Yeah. No, that's okay.
That's great.
So my other question is whether you would offer any extended hours in terms of daycare and do you do that now?
We do do that now. It's up to, right now, based on how many parents are interested in it and with the capacity of our staff to do it, we do it for an hour before school and then we do it for up to an hour and a half after school. And that's tuition driven, that we have a fee for that and we pay staff. A lot of the staff are current employees that just extend their day. And that isn't specialized programming of a preschool curriculum, it's the daycare option or childcare of an extended day. We don't currently have EDP that's in the other buildings running the program, so we run a modified program within.
Okay, can I make a comment about that?
Mm-hmm.
Please.
Okay, I'm speaking on behalf of my daughter who had to work tonight. And she really wanted to send her daughter to Pittaway so that she would grow up as part of the Ashland community, but she works full time and she won't be able to do that if, if, if she has to leave work to come pick up her kid in the middle of the day. So she will be very disappointed.
We have a lot of families that will tell us too because of the extended hours of work or if they're traveling, you know, into the city on the train or things like that, that there's a need. And that's why a lot of the private preschools have those extended hours as well in daycare. So it's definitely things that we're looking at.
But not for next year.
I mean, I don't, I don't know if we'll be changing the program model that drastically, but I think it also is based on the community need and what the supports are within our fiscal abilities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm not.
No remote participation.
Please.
Hi, I just wanted to. Hi, I just wanted to make a comment. Thanks, Sarah, for that presentation. And it was comforting to know that the change is flexible. There is some flexibility into it because the question that I had on my mind was, the town, in the town meetings, we see that, we hear that, you know, there are going to be zoning changes and more apartments coming on, more buildings coming up. We're going to open up for more residents to be here, part of this community. And if their children don't have place in our schools, then that's not going to be fun. So I'm glad to know that we have, we are flexible on that and if need be. Because my son, my youngest, when he came in preschool here, his year, his batch, until today's date, and Mr. Adams can vouch for that, has been the classroom where three classes were added every grade.
That's right.
So that's my son. So, you know, and demographics are changing so much. A lot of people have started loving, like as I said, you know, I'm new to Ashland but not that new. But Ashland has got to me, so. So it's, it's nice to know that our community is able to offer that flexibility. And thank you so much for that.
And I think an important point is that based on our current enrollment, what we expect, if it were to continue the, with the changes, we would be able to accommodate that with some flexibility. And it would only need to add that classroom if we got a substantial increase in enrollment, right? And so we would be able to do that if it's, if it's the same.
Right, and, and to what point, like at what number? Would it be three people new coming in that you would say no? Or would it be only thirteen people coming in new that you would say yes?
Well, I think that that's up for.
For that to me, right, the financial piece of it?
Yeah, so I think that we'd be looking to the school committee. But just for your first point, I'm really grateful that we're included as the fifth school in the public school district because they don't have to include us in looking at how we're supporting preschool education moving forward and being part of the admin meetings and the school committee meetings and talking about the other classrooms with bubble grade levels and having to add those things. That we want to have that same approach that the Warren School or Mindet School are, are doing as we look at enrollment. And that hasn't been our prior practice. We've kind of just set the program, this has been our registration. And now we need to think about it similar to the other buildings within, you know, the K through twelve districts. So if the need is there, we have to then come to school committee and say, how are we going to support that need and make sure that it's fiscally responsible?
Yeah, yeah, because I've been through it, through this process earlier when we moved here. When we were moving to Ashland in two thousand and eight, I had called the preschool, Pittaway at that time, and asked for a full day option and they didn't have one. And I was very disheartened to find out that I would have to, actually have to look for other places for my son to go and drop him somewhere else and, you know, go to work somewhere else and stuff like that. But two weeks later, right after we moved, I just made a call again to find out. And Mrs. Chaney answered to my, my happiness. Yes, things have changed and we have room for a full day. And I was like ecstatic. It was like things changed for me overnight.
It so flew.
So this is really, really helpful.
And I think, you know, in fairness, I think this is our community.
Exactly.
We live here, we're making decisions for, for us.
Yes.
And we want to do what works for everybody. And the things that, and you heard some of it tonight in this discussion, there are other things that factor into discussion. Do we have space? Do we have staff? Do we, do the numbers add up? Because we're voted in to have some fiscal responsibility, correct? So what we want to be able to address all the needs of all students here. So we are going to continue to be as flexible as we can and grow with the community. We're having to do that across, as you stated, every, in every building. And it's, we don't see any end to it. This is, our community is growing and it's becoming more diverse. And we want to accommodate everybody. And when we can't, it's not because we're being difficult. You know, it's because of these other considerations that we, we have to, we have at play. But I, I think we are open to, if the circumstances change, to hearing what the changes are and moving forward with that.
Awesome, thank you. Appreciate that, thanks.
Thanks, good question.
All right, I'll open it up to.
Yeah, so I guess I pose a question to you or to Jim in terms of what we're actually voting on tonight. Because, I mean, it seems like the, the big picture that I'm taking away from this discussion is we want to move to a truly inclusive, integrated preschool program. And we're sort of half of that right now. This, as I sort of read, is proposed model stage one.
Right.
And so we're making progress and it was helpful to hear from both Kathy and Sarah sort of how this sets us up to be able to get there. So, I mean, I'm all, I'm good with that. It also, I'm not sure that it's really a curricular decision that we vote on, we can vote on it.
We're voting on the programmatic change.
So the recommendation that, that we have is that you, you vote, two votes really. One is the increase, a percentage increase in the tuition rate. But also the programmatic changes that, so we can publish tomorrow, the registration. Yeah, thanks, all right. So we can, so we can publish the registration forms, talk specifically about the options that we're giving. So the programmatic changes are the options, right? And, you know, in terms of, you know, reducing one room, that, you know, that's, that's part of our, you know, the budgetary responsibility that you have. So it's just really two votes. One is to accept the programmatic changes as presented in, in the model, proposed model, and two, to increase the tuition rates by two percent so we can get that set and sent out. And again, I do want to emphasize, I think it's really critically important that we've had that conversation that if there's demand, we will come back and we will ask to have another room established as necessary. I think there's, there's complications with, within becoming an integrated preschool itself because you have tuition based students and you have students who are special education students who have no tuition paid, right? So now, in terms of that part of the budget, the special education salaries, et cetera, that's already in our general fund. And, and then we have the revolving account, if you will, the tuition base pays for those other students. But in a duly certified room, it's split half and half. So there are a lot of fiscal implications to moving quickly, quickly into a true integrated room and providing enough space for all students, which we want to do. That being said, it's going to take us two or three iterations of what we have now to get there and making sure we do meet the needs of the community at the same time.
Any further comment, concerns before we ask for a motion? Discussion? No? Make a motion, somebody?
You're doing such a great job. Move to approve.
You just didn't want to say programmatic, did you?
No, all right. Move to approve the Pittaway School programmatic change recommendations for the pre-K, pre-K program for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then there be another motion, tuition rate?
Move to increase the pre-K tuition rate by two percent for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
Should we, should we actually read the dollar amounts? If that, if that's what they're going to be, it may not be exactly two percent.
Yeah, that was, well, yeah, that's a fair point.
Yeah.
So are these the dollar figures?
Those are the dollar figures.
So why don't we do it this way? Move to set the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year pre-K rates at the rates presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah and Kathy. And, and I do want to also go on record, I know Sarah spent a lot of time meeting with the faculty and getting their input on the model changes. And, and, you know, we've worked hard over a lot of years to, to pull Pittaway into the Ashland Public Schools. Since, I know since I've become superintendent, it's been a focus of ours to, to make sure that everyone, we're pulling in the same direction, right, as a, as a program, pre-K through twelve. I remember Pat always saying to me, at graduation time, when I'd give a graduation speech, "Thank you for including pre-K." Because really, that's where it begins for our kids. And that's where our, our obligation begins in this community. But now, having everyone in the foresight that, you know, that Mark, that you had and Laura, you had when we were negotiating the, the last contract to, to ensure there's, there's consistency with our teaching staff and the ability to, for our staff to be paid on an equal standing, to, to have the same rights and, you know, you know, whether it's prep time and, and planning and professional development, that's a big step for us. And that's taken a long time and we're there. And we're, we're slowly getting to, to a place where I would love to see us be, to the point the lady made earlier about are, are we doing a good job with integrate? We are. We're doing a great job at integrated education. We really are. We've seen a tremendous increase and we're trying to make sure we meet that demand as well as we move forward. So, so thank you. I know a lot of you are here still tonight and have provided a lot of input with Sarah over the course of, of the six months, seven months since we've been doing this, so thank you.
Thanks, everybody, thanks. Okay, student travel request. Okay, student travel request, AHS, JSA, Winter Congress.
So as in past.
Right, everybody.
So as in past years, our JSA. So our debate club heads down to Arlington, Virginia, and this is just consistent with approvals in the past.
Do we have a motion?
So I have a question.
Yeah.
Why are they taking a train and spending like an entire day traveling?
Uh, that's just their choice, and I.
Because it's, it's literally an eight and a half hour train.
Yeah, I, I think when they looked at the cost, it was cheaper than the flight, so, I, I don't know, I'm.
I looked today and it was the same.
Well, maybe, well, maybe that's their choice, and they'll be practicing on the way down for their debates, so.
And are the parents driving them to the train station?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Because they're markedly close to restricted travel.
Correct, yep. Their parent, correct, yep.
We have a motion?
Move to approve the student travel request from the Ashland High Junior State of America to travel to Arlington, Virginia from February eighth to February tenth, twenty nineteen, to attend the Winter Congress.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I know, Paul, you look so tired.
Everyone left.
Do we need a coffee break?
Like talking to a bunch of empty chairs.
Right.
Okay, Ashland Cable Access Board vacancy appointment.
Yeah, each year, depending upon the term, three or two-year terms, we have to appoint, the school committee appoints two members to the Ashland Cable Access. And speaking of Barbara Chisholm, we have, this is, hold on here. Yes, okay, so we, we have, we have a couple motions. One is to appoint Robert Thacker to the Ashland Access Board, and that would be for a three-year term.
Was, was there a reason we didn't?
He's, he's up.
We didn't do it in October when he was up?
I think we just missed it.
Okay.
We just, we just missed it. Right.
So, so it'll be from, it'll, it'll, it's, the terms are October, so it's kind of a.
Correct. Correct.
Post-dated.
Yep.
Appointment.
Yep. So, do we want to take them separately? Because then I got one more.
Yeah, I think we got it.
Yep. So the motion is to reappoint Mr. Bob Taps Thacker to the Ashland Cable Access Board.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Ann Stacy, who has been with us for a long time on the board, and we've appointed her here numerous times, has, effective January one, has submitted a letter of resignation, and Barbara Chisholm has asked that we appoint Makita Keegan to that role.
Now, we're appointing her for the remainder of that.
For, of Ann Stacy's, correct. Of Ann Stacy's three-year term, or her term, correct.
Were there any other nominees that we should be considering?
No, no.
That makes it easy.
That's the only one, correct.
And move to appoint Makita Keegan to the Ashland Cable Access Board to fill the vacancy left by the resignation of Ms. Ann Stacy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving forward, foreign exchange students, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Um, so.
You're not Dr. Vera.
No, he's not, but I'll intervene. That's, that's, that's what we do, we do interventions.
Did he ask you to?
Yes. So, Ms. Anker.
Paul needs an RTI.
Ms. Anker, as you know, the board approved five at one of our last, a couple meetings ago. Kelly actually interviews the kids, but this time she actually did, she couldn't actually make it, so she had seven Skype interviews that were taped and recorded for, and she said, "I can't really pick five." So, so she went to Paul and said, you know, or Paul went to her and said, "Do you think we can up it to seven? Could we handle two more kids?" So the recommendation is just to increase from five to seven. Kelly's great with it. We don't know if all seven will come, but at least she's, she's done the, the screening, if you will, of, of the kids, so.
And, and, and it's only those seven that have already, already applied? There is not like, so, somebody else would, if they, if we get, the only, the, only the five, two are going to come later on at some point that aren't already interviewed, or, or is it?
No, all seven have been.
All seven have interviewed.
Right, so what.
I think Paul's point is if.
Is it these particular seven?
Oh.
Could two others apply later?
They could, if, if we open it up, sure. Yep.
Not that, not that it would matter.
No, right, they could, you're right. If, if, if only five of the seven chose to come, their two sides are still open, correct.
Right, and.
We would interview them.
She would still have the ability to say no to the, to any applicants?
Correct.
Yes.
She has, she has the ability to say no to all, any of these.
Okay.
Correct. Yep. It's our choice.
Move to increase the number of available seats for foreign exchange students for the nineteen, excuse me, for the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year to a total of seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, superintendent's report?
No, you should interrupt him.
I will defer to Dr. Vera for assistant superintendent's report.
Let's hear from you tonight, Dr. Vera.
My, thank you. My, my report has just.
Just ended.
With nine parts.
All right.
That'd be great for Ms. Palini over there.
No, you know, my, my monthly report is attached, but just highlighting that on January eighteenth, we'll have our full day P D I. I know many of you have signed up to attend some of the sessions. I think, Mark, it would be nice just to be able to float in and out of some of them. So I look forward to having you there. We're really excited to have all these outside presenters come in. It was interesting, we capped the sessions at about twenty-five because of the classroom, and Dan Richards, who's the principal over in Georgetown, actually had forty sign up for one session, seventy-five sign up for another, so he's doing one on S E L, and we moved him into the library. And Carrie Oda Poby, who's doing some of the behavioral management with staff and kids, and she actually had about forty-five, fifty people sign up for each of her sessions. So there's a demand for that, how to work with, you know, your, your reluctant learner, and also that S E L piece. So we're seeing that whole S E L component come together, so excited to have this on the eighteenth, and excited to have members of the school committee come and show up for it, so look forward to having you.
Excellent, thank you for the invite. All right, we don't have warrant approvals, policy updates. Who wants to?
I will defer to Mr. Kendall.
Mr. Kendall.
Okay, so the, the policy subcommittee, I'll, I'll, I'll talk about these together because they're essentially the same.
Related, yeah.
They're the same policy as the whole policy and policy dash R, construct, I don't really care for anyway, but. So the policy was reviewed by the committee, we consulted with Mr. Adams, and as well as Ms. LaCroy, who was involved in the process of adopting the policy back in two thousand nine. Based on those discussions, the policy subcommittee is recommending that we remove them, move the policies. The policy is primarily just either reference or quote statutes, and most of the responsibilities outlined are either common sense or covered in the handbooks. And so after reviewing it again with Ms. LaCroy, it didn't seem that there was anything of substance that we needed to maintain there. And looking at other districts in the M A S E reference manual, we weren't able to find other districts that had similar policies, not in the M A S E reference. You know, so that was our recommendation to remove the, the two policies. The, the source was written locally, so. And it was at a time prior to us adopting the M A S E framework and things like that, so.
And you're saying most of its contents are covered elsewhere in either handbooks or law?
A lot of it, a lot of it states, "We will make sure people are educated in their statu- statutory responsibilities to, you know, do these things." So it, it's, there's not, if you, if you go through it, there's not a lot of things that stand on their own as, you know, substantive things that aren't just saying, "We're going to follow statute."
Yeah, it's basically, I read the meat of it, it says basically, "We'll accommodate students that are, have chronic illnesses as required by law." Doesn't really do anything.
And, and, and quite frankly, if we were to try to write, rewrite this and be encompassing, a chronic illness, you know, can be as varied as, as, you know, as can be. So there's, I don't think there's really a policy that you can do it, and then they outline some, some responsibilities, and it says things like, "The parents are going to notify the district of changes." I, you know, obviously they would. And so chronic illness, you know, obviously the points of contact are, are, are the nurse and, and the teacher and the administrators, so it's, it's, there's nothing in there, and, and some of the content is also just duplicated in the handbooks already, which is more procedurally where people go to for what they're supposed to do than the policies, so for those reasons, that's why we, we didn't feel the need to maintain them going forward.
We, meaning this is the recommendation of the policy committee?
The policy.
The policy subcommittee?
Yeah.
So I, I'm fine with what the committee's recommending. We generally have a practice of doing the first read, second read on major policies, at least when we add them. I don't know if we have the same protocol with respect to removing or deleting.
It's, it's not, we did, there's no affirmative protocol that says that, and.
We've not done it in the past, because we've, we've removed other ones that have been, like M A S E, the policy newsletter said they removed it from the, there, we've done it. I don't know, we're going to, we'd be reading a policy that's been in place for.
Right. Now, I mean, when we talk about first read, we're not really reading it out loud, right, I mean, we're just kind of announcing. Well, I mean, certainly you and Kathy are on the sub, the subcommittee, right?
Right.
So we know that at most there'd be one other person who.
Right.
May have a different opinion, and I'm fine moving forward if we don't have enough forward policy then, so.
Yeah, same. So who's got the motion?
You might as well make the motion soon, so I've already.
I've worn myself out on motion tonight, so, you know, this was your, your committee's recommendation.
I, I, I move that we remove policy J L C E E and J L C C C E E R from our policy manual.
So I suppose I have to second, huh?
You do.
Second.
Don't be difficult.
Yeah, it's getting late.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, minutes. Anything on December twelfth?
I didn't have anything on either.
And R fifteen?
I'll jump the gun.
Okay, did you have anything on December twelfth?
I honestly did not get a chance to look to, look at that, but I'm comfortable moving forward anyway.
Okay, and then December fifteenth?
Workshop.
Yeah, I, I didn't, again, I did not have a chance.
I'm, I'm good, I, I looked at, I'm, I'm good with both.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the minutes of both December twelfth and December fifteenth?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Gifts and donations?
Yes, we have some. Let me grab these here. We have donor of Alliance Energy LLC, five hundred dollars to support math and science at the Warren School. B J's Wholesale Club, two hundred and fifteen dollars to be determined. Anonymous gift of a thousand dollars was to the helping our, our Ashland zone. Wait, ten-dollar class of two thousand nineteen Senior Week. Loiter's Environment, they always give a fifty-dollar donation right around the holidays. Miscellaneous gifts and donations. There are multiple gifts to the Ash Pack programs of ninety dollars. And there's an anonymous gift, which I, I wanted to actually speak about, for five thousand six hundred dollars. Over the, the break, I was contacted by a citizen in town asking how she could help our, our public schools. She does not have a child in our, in our schools, and what she wanted to do was help clear out the outstanding lunch balances of any student pre-K through twelve that had outstanding lunch balances. So when I walked her through the process, in terms of, we, there are families that will eventually pay their outstanding balance. She, and I said, "Here's the, the number," she said, "No, I want to donate the whole amount and then keep that in, in balance to offset any costs for the remainder of the year, should you need it." So thank you to that anonymous donor, but in total, the co, the donations are seven thousand four hundred sixty-five dollars.
Very generous.
Very generous.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
So I move to accept the donations as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number updates?
So, I don't know, I didn't know where to put this one, it's all put at the front, so I think, you know, maybe several of us attended the services for both Chris Beaton and PJ Ferrier, so while that, you know, seems like a long time ago, it was a week and a half ago, you know, want to extend our condolences, and thoughts are still with the families and friends of them. Last night, Karen Spilka hosted her annual S E L event at the Warren Conference Center. I think we had probably a little over two hundred people attend that, so it was very well-attended. So thank you to Karen or her staff for hosting it each year and all their continued support for our schools, and we had, we had a little celebrity there as well. Jen, Jennifer Cutler was a panelist there, and she did a fantastic job, so thanks to Jen as well. We all had the budget workshop, we had a policy subcommittee meeting, obviously. I, I did attend with, with my family, the Clocker Idol this year, which was, it was amazing. A lot of the, the contestants that participated were freshmen, and they were amazingly talented, so it's pretty impressive. So, and so update on the building committee stuff. We had a building committee meeting and two O P M selection subcommittee meetings. We have an R F S that has been approved by the M S B A and has been submitted to the central register in the Metro West Daily News. It will, those will appear in the central register on the sixteenth and Metro West Daily News on the tenth. They, they will then get respondents that they're, they can respond up until February first. The O P M selection subcommittee is currently working on the interview questions for the shortlisted respondents. And just to give you an update on what the schedule is, so we will shortlist the respondents and finalize the interview questions on February eleventh. We have a building committee meeting on February twelfth, and the interviews for those shortlisted respondents will be done by the O P M Selection Subcommittee on the nineteenth of February.
Thank you.
Sounds like you're moving along. So I didn't, I didn't have anything specific I wanted to mention, except that I've been asked to go to a Boy Scout troop meeting in February, early February, to talk about what the school committee does.
Excellent.
I was asked by a friend who's the parent and then has a, a son in that group. So I look forward to, to talking with those, and then I'll report back on that when, after we meet.
That's community outreach, right?
Absolutely. I'd be at a, at a town basketball game, say, "What do you think, y'all?"
That's where it happens.
Yeah.
I ha, I attended the high school site council today, and that's it, other than, you know, some of the stuff that we've done together.
So just, there are action items?
Uh, yes, there are, thank you. Subcommittee recognition strategy, I think we can.
We just, we just need to put.
Take that off now, right?
Yep.
Because we have.
Yep.
Given our first award. We have the M S B A Building Committee ongoing, right?
Yep.
So that's.
All those are, rest are summer topics.
And the rest of things are summer workshop items, district fees, athletic fee structure.
Don't we have a presentation coming up on, on Mindes?
Yeah, I just wrote that down too.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, the Mindes Academic Study Group, Dr. Cohen will present on the, in the February twenty-fourth meeting that we have. Or I think it's the twenty-fourth, right? Whatever that second meeting is in February.
Tell me, tell me it's not.
She's away, I, I had asked her.
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, yeah.
That's better.
I had asked her to come in the first meeting, but she's going to be at a conference, so she, she can come on, on the twenty-seventh to present the findings.
I did attend the, the last meeting of that group, and now we're just awaiting her.
And I'm also, Stephen Marks will be here, I, in the first meeting in February, to, to discuss some of the actions that have been taken from the athletic audit that we did, the review, so he's going to update us on the things that, because of the recommendations that were in there, some things that have occurred that he's been working on, so.
Great.
Yep.
All right, and I would make a motion to adjourn.
I would second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good night, everybody.